Okay. Leland.
Oh.
Let's look at this here.
Brian.
Yeah.
No, no, more of Haiti.
2024, would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board met in closed session this morning. Items we met on were item one, conference with real property negotiators. This is the property lease of 10877 Kentucky Boulevard. Direction was given. We also had a conference of county council. We had claim two A, claiming Megan Seeley. It was denied. We also have a claim two B of Michael Wilson, and it was denied. And the confidential minutes were approved. With that, we're going to move on to public matters not on the agenda. Is there any members of public that like to talk about an item that's not on the agenda currently? If you would, please state your name for the record and sign in, and you have three minutes.
David Wardall.
Good morning, Dave.
Good morning. Members of the board and county staff, good morning. I'd like to take a second and explain a little bit about Eagles Nest Airport. The airport is a valuable community asset. It has a designated emergency medevac helicopter landing area with lighting 24/7. The day after 9/11, we had the Air Force out looking at the runway to hide F-16s if all hell broke loose. So we told them, come on in, we'll break the noise limit, but come on in. We are well armed, and we have the back to the sheriff's department. We have your back. Anyway, I want to say thank you for the recent county zoning ordinance that informs people within two miles of the airport that the airport's there. So if they buy property, you know, it's, they know it, and it's before closing the ESCO there. That way, it'll help hopefully reduce noise complaints. And we, we keep our noise levels below 65 NEL on the property. And in reality, it's down to 45 CNL by the time you get to the end of the property area. We have 1,100 acres now on that airport. Any questions? Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Well, I have one. Dave here. I'd like to know when you're going to send the warbirds over my place, because I'd like to watch them and hear them.
Give me your lat long, and we can arrange for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leland, I think you had something you wanted to talk on.
I need a moment to remember Junior Ball. He drove school bus, which I saw years ago. And I think probably another kid might rode the bus with Junior, and so did Park Crew's kid. I gotta say, Junior and Junior were the best people around Amador County. They would give a shirt off their back. So appreciate that I have a moment of silence, remember Junior Ball memory.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead, and we'll have a moment of silence for Junior Ball. He was a bus driver a lot of years, a real easygoing guy. But if you got him mad, he could kind of get a little, a little bit not so nice, but in a good way. He did a very good job, and he's a very nice man. So we have a moment of silence for Mr. Ball. Well, thank you. Yeah, I remember the bus drivers when I was a kid. Things are a little different back then, and they ran their buses, and you did as you were told. And they, they kept them pretty well under control. And if they weren't under control, it was not for very long before it got back under control. We kind of need to go back there a little bit, I think. But thank you, Leland, that was, that was nice to remember him. Any other members of public like to comment, any issue?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a comment via Zoom. Ms. Evatt, please go ahead when ready.
Hi, this is Catherine Evatt, resident of Volcano. I'm just calling today to recognize the very long service of Supervisor Forster, and this is his last board meeting, and the two Terms of Service of Supervisor Acts. I know that I'm not always, you know, the best person to deal with as a county supervisor, but I really respect all of you who take your time and spend a portion of your lives representing Amador County and in all of the service that you give to our community. So I didn't see anything on the agenda about this today, so I thought I would call in and just thank you personally. And I'm sure there are many other people who are grateful for your years of service. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Well, thank you, Catherine. As far as not being an agenda, they requested kind of, they would like to have a low key. But I thought, well, probably won't be low key for it's all over with. But, but thank you for recognizing that. Slabenco.
Good morning.
Jamie.
Jamie Labenco, District Five, Fiddletown, Amador County Fair Board of Directors. I just wanted to reiterate some of the comments that Catherine just made and thank Supervisor Forster for his, I don't know how many years of service it's been, but he's been always fair, always considerate. And even though I'm not a constituent, I've always really appreciated him being moderate on really important issues. I don't have the same long history with Supervisor Axe, but I certainly do also appreciate your effort and your years here as well. And on behalf of the Amador County Fair Board, I think I could speak for all of us and say thank you so much to Supervisor Forster for his support over the years of all of our programs out there. Of course, all the programs relative to the youth as well. Sorry, I was running. I was trying to make public comment. Anyway, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. Any other members of public like to comment? Board members?
I miss you guys.
Well, we'll still be here, don't worry. You know, we can come down and harangue you if you want.
All the time. You're invited.
In line, yeah.
Yeah, you're going to wake up on that second, fourth Tuesday and make a run off the door putting your clothes on? And go, wait a minute, hey, I'm the longest supervisor, so.
No, I'm going to get up and make a fire.
I'm going to roll over.
But anyway, well, we thank you for your service to citizens. And didn't always agree on all things, but overall, I think I tried to do a pretty good job, so thank you.
And just in case everybody thinks that Richard's getting off easy, he was well embarrassed during the CSAC conference down in Pasadena. He was, he was definitely harangued quite a bit and, and definitely given out some wonderful awards. And thank you very much. And I thank you for everything you did to help me to get into CSAC and all the people you've introduced me to. You know, the one thing, first thing Richard does, do you know Jeff Brown? Do you, do you know him? And that's the first words out of his mouth. Anytime we walk, walk by anybody that he knows, well, he knows everybody. So it was always, it was always interesting to be with, with Richard during the CSAC conference.
Thank you, Supervisor.
You have any words or just, you're good? Okay.
Well, it's, it's been an honor and a pleasure. And thanks to everybody that come down and wish me well, and I'll be around, so you'll be seeing me.
Okay, any, one last time, any members of public like to comment?
One, one last thing is something separate. As we're seeing all the concern back east on drones and, you know, the information is going on. The one thing people need to know, we have drones that are operated remotely in Amador County. PG&E has a contractor that has it completely remote. It's got a automatic garage that opens up to allow the drone to roll out, and it can inspect their canal and pipeline going from Salt Springs to Tiger Creek and on farther down. So you can see these drones flying around Amador County. Plus, there's a whole bunch of our own people that are, are flying them. Yeah, I know quite a few of them, so.
Okay. So we have our own drones. I don't feel so left out now.
We have our own drones. It, it is honestly wild to watch, there's nobody around, and this door just flies open, and the drone pops out, does its thing, and then flies back in, and then, with nobody else around. It's, it's 100% remote controlled.
Just like, just like the Jetsons, huh?
Yep.
On PG&E, I think they did a great job this last storm. Eric Alvarez and the reports he gave to us about the power outages, very much appreciated. And it wasn't just like one, it was ongoing. I really appreciate him staying on top of it. I still think this board going forward needs to oppose the PG&E rate increases in the future. They're going back to the CPUC at least once a year, asking for rate increases. And it's all to pay for deferred maintenance that they've done over the last 30 years. So we're paying for what they should have been doing all along now in bulk with these pretty massive rate increases.
Agreed.
No, it is a problem. It's, it's deferred maintenance, but I think some of it's also some of the going green costs. And that's part of it too, as far as rate increases, but.
I'm looking at comments on Facebook when the rate increases are even talked about. And what you have in a lot of cases is people of lower income, single mothers, having to make a decision. I've paid the power bill, we're probably going to have to eat less food. That's what it comes down to.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, okay, moving on. Also, item, just an item of note, item four D, which is the Amador County Tourism Marketing District. It's being moved to a future meeting. So I would say it's probably better if you hold your comments till then. But if you have something you'd like to say, or you can't make, make the future meeting, it'd be the second meeting in January, January 28th. So if you'd like, when it comes up, four D comes up, if you want to talk about it, you can. But it's really, we're going to have two new board members coming on, and it'll be heard in January 28th. So just making you aware of that. At this point, we'll take item four A, this is National Homeless Person Memorial Day.
How about we approve?
Consent agenda? Yeah, please. And the regular agenda.
Move to approve the agenda with that change.
Second.
Motion by Axe, second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carrie Jananamis.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Axe, second by Forster, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That carries unanimous. No? Thank you. We'll move down to item four, four A on the regular agenda. This is National Homeless Person Memorial Day. And would you like to speak on this?
I'm going to go ahead and read the, the resolution today, and I'll present it to some of the members of our audience. But this is a resolution in recognition of National Homeless Persons Memorial. Whereas the National Coalition for Homelessness and the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council have, have designated December 21st, 2024 as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. And whereas each, each year, thousands of men, women, and children die in California without stable and secure shelter. And whereas homelessness and the risk of homelessness continues to be a serious challenge for many Amador County residents who have the right to adequate food, housing, clothing, safety, and healthcare. And whereas shelter is a fundamental right and basic human need, and homelessness raises the person's risk of illness, injury, and death. And whereas the winter poses extreme hardship for unsheltered and inadequately housed, low-income individuals and families in Amador County. And whereas the Amador County Homeless Task Force has worked diligently to advance potential solutions and bring awareness to the struggles of unhoused neighbors. And whereas local nonprofit organizations, Small Change for Big and Operation Care host the third annual longest night vigil in Amador County on December 21st, 2024 in Jackson's Peckrovich Park. And whereas the Homeless Persons Memorial Service in Jackson will commemorate our neighbors who have passed away in 2024 as a result of homelessness, as local residents join individuals across the state and country remembering those who have died in their own communities. And whereas in remembering those who have died without homes of their own, we recognize the urgency of ending homelessness, the need for compassionate response, and the county's collective commitment to prevent such deaths in the future. Therefore, be it resolved by the board supervisors of the County of Amador, the State of California does hereby recognize December 21st, 2024 as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day in Amador County, and to remember those who had died while experiencing homelessness, and to encourage citizens to celebrate their memory and work to address the factors that lead to homelessness.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I have a couple of comments, probably. Any board members have any comments? Members of the public? Yeah, it's, I'm going to vote no on this. One of the reasons why, it's kind of like it's homelessness, sad thing. Yeah, it is. But as far as putting him in a, in a special category, what about? I had friends I know, one, one died this year, working man. He got killed, working. We have no resolution for him or them. Is homeless, homelessness something I'd like to see go away? Absolutely. But do I do want to do a resolution, basically put him on a pillar? I don't think so. So I'm not going to vote for it. And I think if we want to do something about homelessness, it's something I saw in my lifetime. We used to have a lumber mill up there where Safeway is. Provided a lot of jobs, where, i.e., people have a job, are a lot more liable likely to have a home. Provided an economy, it provided lumber, you can build homes. So we saved the spotted owl, we took out our mill, we took out our jobs, we took out our forests, some for towns. And we didn't save the spotted owl neither. So anyway, that's, what I look at too, is part of this resolution is talking about, they have a right to, a fundamental right to these items. And if you look at our history, when people came to America, immigrants mainly, and some that were already here, there was no right to anything. You had a right to go, had a right to work and, and to do well. And now people have a right to whatever they want, whether they work or not. Now, if somebody's disabled, hey, I understand that, I don't have a problem with that. But it's just, anyway, that's some of my thoughts. So at this time, any members of public like to comment? Again? Looking for a motion? Okay.
I just want to say that Homeless Persons Memorial, my name's Trixie. I'm from Sierra Wind Wellness and Recovery Center, and I'm also on the board of Small Change for Big and on the Homeless Task Force. And I have a street ministry for our unhoused neighbors as well. I form, I've been homeless a lot myself, so I personally think that everybody should be homeless. I mean, it teaches resilience and compassion, and it just helps you to understand a lot of things that you normally couldn't when you have to struggle just for your basic needs each day. But I do want to take note that Homeless Persons Memorial Day is a nationally recognized event now, and I'm glad that Amador County is willing to participate in that.
Thank you, Trixie. Good morning, my name is Ty Poleskamp. I live here in Jackson. I also have experienced homelessness. When I left Amador County for college, staying housed was a feat that I was not able to manage. And my first encounter, building a friendship with someone who died frozen to death after the city of Santa Cruz had passed their anti-camping ordinance. His name was Jimmy, and Jimmy was disabled, and that is why Jimmy could not keep a job and could not manage housing. I don't know what his relationship to the spotted owl was. I would like to read a list of names of people that I have known in my lifetime. I'm 40 years old, and I was raised here. Some of these people died here in Amador County, and some of these people died here this year. But each of these people died without shelter, and many of them died without being remembered in the sense that most of us, when we pass away, our families are able to put together an obituary and publish that so the community can honor them in a dignified way. And that is why Homeless Persons Memorial Day is worth uplifting, something you voted for last year with a little edit about not having the right to housing. But I understand, we all vote differently, thank God. But the case is that dying outside is very different than dying inside. It's very different than dying on hospice. It's very different than dying surrounded by warmth and comfort, the music that speaks to your heart, the nourishment and flavors that remind you of better times. Dying alone, cold, homeless is very different. And I hope that none of us experience that. But the truth is, I've had a number of friends, and these are the few names that I could remember. Vaughn, Brian, Seamus, DaVinci, Billy, Luke, Elaine, Pat, Daniel, Perry, Jimmy, Biff, Jeffrey, Dax, Frankie, Regina, Paul, Heather. Thank you. They each deserve that same moment of silence.
Could you guys wait just a second? I was going to present this to you.
We need to vote on it?
Yeah.
We'll approve. Second.
I have a motion by Forster. Second, was that, was you Frank? Are you second?
Yes.
Second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm opposed. So is that four one? And just an item of interest also, for the record, the friend of mine that died, he died smashed by a tree out in the woods, so.
One of the people on this list also died, but they were camping in a tent that was their home, and they were also smashed by a tree. I'm sorry for your loss, Brian.
Well, it's just, the thing is too, when we had to move the homeless camp out, out by Walmart. Yeah, I'll just leave it go.
Bob Hartman, Pine Grove. I'd like to thank Supervisor Axe. Five years ago this month, my wife and I joined the Homeless Task Force, and Supervisor Axe has been chair of the Homeless Task Force that entire time. We appreciate his dedication and his leadership there, and we're going to miss you on the Homeless Task Force. Mr. Anetto, I told myself this morning that if you brought up Spotted Owl again, I was going to walk out of the meeting, but I decided to get up and say something instead. This is the fourth time in the last six weeks that I've heard you blame the economic ills of Amador County and indirectly, indirectly homelessness on the Spotted Owl. There are many reasons why the mill closed in 1997, 27 years ago. Many economic reasons. The mill chose not to retool to be able to handle smaller logs, and they retooled in areas outside of Amador County. Then the jobs left here. Economic disaster. But to continually and divisively blame the Spotted Owl is not very beneficial. I think we need to look forward, to focus on how we can continue to improve the economy in Amador County and not blame. What we need is decency and kindness. Decency and kindness towards the homeless, support for the homeless, support for those unfortunate people in our county who are barely keeping roofs over their head, barely keeping food on their table, so.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, because it helps to put food on your table if you have a stable job. And I happen to be in the timber industry, so I, I know what happened there and why. Spotted Owl, Forster shut down. Mill said, hey, our timber supply is gone. Civically reduced, mill shut down, which is jobs for people, it's economy, it's lumber for houses. lumber for houses. That's why I bring it up. So I think it's a very, there's a very big connection to it. And part of it is, I think that's looking back, and sometimes you gotta look back as you're going forward, so you don't make similar mistakes. It may not always be a lumber mill, it may be some other part of your economy. And there's, sometimes there's very feel-good factors. When you pay the price later on, there are rather severe consequences. And matter of fact, speaking about the homeless, I had a call from a lady, Laura Matley, yesterday. Her husband was walking out by the Catholic cemetery up near the elementary school, near Jackson Gate Road. And one of the dogs in the homeless camp attacked her husband, and he had his dog with him. He was fighting off the dog, woke up a little bit later, bump on his head, hand all bitten up and bloody. Didn't know if he had a heart issue, or if he hit, or if he fell and hit his head and that caused it. But anyway, part of the problem is, like, when we did the Walmart, there's homeless out there, amount of garbage they brought was incredible. And we said, hey, we're gonna clean up this property. We said, we have services for you. A lot of services. What would you like? They said, nothing, man. That's what I heard from the staff. One lady, who I guess was very sick, said she would like some help, and we helped her. The rest of them, they didn't want nothing. So, if a person's looking for help, I'm more than willing to help them. A lot of these people, they don't want the help. But yet, Mr. Matley has some health problems, bitten up by a dog, that came out of homeless camp. So, and you look at some of the businesses, we're not having a huge problem here, but there's been a fair bit of problem here. And I'm not saying you can't help the homeless, not a bad thing to do. I don't want to idolize them. So, any other members of the public like to comment? Frank? Good?
I'm fine, thanks.
Okay. Moving on, item 4B, Probation Department, Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Adoption and Presentation of Resolution Recognizing Mr. James D. Long Upon His Retirement From Amador County. Morning.
We're here to recognize Dave Long upon his impending retirement. I'm Mark Benini, I'm the Chief Probation Officer for Amador County. Our department's made up of 15 officers and four support staff. They're all here in the back, kind of peppered around back there. But at any given time, we're charged with the supervision of approximately 1,600 offenders, which include both adult and juveniles. We support the court and our allied agencies as well. Again, being here to recognize Dave upon his impending retirement. Dave came to work for our department on August 1st of 2001. He was hired using grant funds, I don't know if he remembers back then, but he was hired using grant funds by then Chief Probation Officer Mike Bagnell. Those funds were used to have probation officers mostly on the campuses of our local high schools. So Dave got a crash course in dealing with juveniles right away, coming from the private sector, prior to employment here with the county. Through the years, and his funding sources changed, so did Dave's assignments. Some of those assignments were court officer, juvenile supervision officer, adult supervision officer. And of course, within those categories, there were assignments that were more specific. But nonetheless, Dave served in all those areas. Dave always made a point to attempt to develop rapport with offenders under his supervision. Many times, we get to hear him take several, and I mean several, minutes out of his busy day to offer counsel and direction to offenders who felt, he felt just needed a little bit more advice. He's leaving us, after 23 years of service, to our county. He's leaving us a better department than when we started. Dave is leaving us to start the next phase of his life. And we wish him all the best.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. Well, thank you, Mr. Benini. Also, we have a resolution here. I'd like to go ahead and read that resolution. This is a resolution honoring James D. Long Upon His Retirement From Amador County. James Long was born January 22nd, 1971, in San Leandro. Whereas Dave grew up in Castro Valley, California, graduated from Castro Valley High School, graduated from Caleris State University, Chico, in 1994, with a Bachelor of Arch degree in public relations. Dave discovered his passion for working with at-risk youth. Was employed at Butte County Juvenile Hall during college. He later pursued a career in sales with CBS and Time Warner. Dave is a son of James A. Long and Judith A. Long, to whom he credits for always encouraging him to pursue his passions in life, and would not be where he is today without their love and support. Dave started working with the Amador County Probation Department in 2001 as a deputy probation officer assigned to Amador County Unified School District campuses, eventually reaching the rank of Deputy Probation Officer III, assigned to a variety of units to probation department. Dave is a dog lover and enjoyed raising three yellow Labrador Retrievers during his probation career, Howie, Tucker, and Zach, and plans on getting a new Labrador puppy for companionship during his retirement. Dave is also an outdoor enthusiast who enjoys fishing, hunting, camping, and spending as much time as possible in Sierra Nevada and the mountains. Dave has rendered over 23 years of faithful and dedicated service to the County of Amador. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Amador, State of California, said board is hereby adopt this resolution, commending James D. Long for his many years of service to the people of County of Amador, December 17th, 2024, today. So, and hey, it's unanimous. So, probably need a motion on this, too.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Here is unanimous. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, James.
I just wanted to take a quick second and rich Supervisor Forrester, wish him all the best upon his retirement. I'm sure you have something else in the hopper. Same to you Supervisor Axe. Thank you for your service for us.
Thank you, Mark.
Always working with me and the department well. So I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like the, I always like a dog lover, James, so that, somebody who follows their passion, that's what I liked about that. That is, you chose not to go with the big corporations and went with your heart. So I appreciate that. Thanks for your service.
Anybody else like to speak on this? Mr. Long, I agree with you, dogs are pretty cool. So, hope you enjoy your retirement. Thank you. Next, we have item 4C. This is Discussion of Possible Action and Presentation of Resolution Recognizing Mr. Dave Wardell for his years of service to Amador County. And I think, Richard, you're gonna be doing the resolution.
Yeah, I'd like the board to pass the resolution for...
Okay.
I'll move approval of the resolution.
Motion by Forrester, second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Here is unanimous.
You know, being a planning commissioner is pretty unthankful sometimes. You get the big check, but you gotta take a lot of abuse sometimes, and really, you gotta spend a lot of time thinking about issues. So I appreciate your service. So, resolution recognizing Dave Wardell for his years of service, whereas Dave Wardell obtained a pilot's license in 1968, and whereas in 1971, David received a Bachelor of Sciences degree in aeronautical maintenance from San Jose State University, and was on the dean's list every semester. And whereas, David held the position of Associate Production Engineer with Lockheed Aircraft Corporation from 1971-1972, and Airframe Systems Engineer from 1973-1974. And whereas, from 1974-1977, David held the position of Aviation Consultant and Airport Inspector for the California Department of Aeronautics. Whereas, between 1977 and 2008, David held the following positions with the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, or CAL FIRE: Deputy Chief Airplane Program, Deputy Chief Research and Development, Chief Aircraft Maintenance and Engineering, Manager Aircraft Maintenance and Engineering. Whereas, David was appointed to the Amador County Planning Commission in 2008, representing District Two, serving as chairman for three years, 2018, '21, and '22. And whereas, after retirement in 2009, David worked as a consulting aerospace engineer and assisted wide list of clients, including, but not limited to NASA, NTSB, DynCorp International, US Forest Service, Comerica Bank oversees aircraft support, Cessna, and City of Los Angeles. And whereas, David takes great pride in recently having the opportunity to provide flight instruction to his grandson, who is now a commercial pilot. And whereas, David met his wife Janet in kindergarten. The two were married in 1970 and celebrated 54 years of marriage this year. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors, County of Amador, State of California, does hereby recognize Dave Wardell for his numerous accomplishments and service to the County of Amador. Thank you, Dave. It's been an honor to be a planning commissioner. It's been an honor to be a planning commissioner, and I've always put the county first. It's a privilege to live in Amador County, and I always try to keep it Amador County, and protect personal property rights, and look out the general safety of the county. And some, a few times, there are things where hard decisions to make, but you always try to do the right thing. So I appreciate it. And Frank Axe and Richard Forrester, thank you for your help in running the county and your service on the Board of Supervisors. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. You know, I'd like to make a comment also. I guess I can just say, Dave is all about airplanes, and really good at it. And I think the Eagle's Nest, which you, it was your baby, and you didn't just think about it, you also built it. It's a real asset and a jewel to this county, and you've been a very good member of the community and done a lot for your community, and so I thank you. Any other members of the public? Board? Good? Moving on, item 4D, this is Amador County Tourism Marketing District.
Is this item gonna go forward at this time?
We're just gonna take comment.
Okay, I'm gonna recuse myself, so I'll be in the other room.
So Supervisor Axe, you can, probably have to, I mean, it's kind of complicated, because this is your last meeting. You're certainly allowed to hear public comment as a citizen. Technically should step down from the dais.
Okay.
But...
All right.
Since we know there's not gonna be any deliberation, because this matter's getting moved, it's probably fine for you to stay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Never mind.
Good morning, Supervisors. Tracy Burkner, co-founder and Vice President of the Amador Council of Tourism. Today, I am just going to give you an update on what the Amador Council of Tourism has been up to recently. And I'd like to agree with Mr. Wardell that we're pretty lucky to live in Amador County. So, just a reminder, the Amador Council of Tourism is a completely volunteer board. We do all of this selflessly to help promote Amador County and raise all of the businesses. So, here are the things that we've been up to lately. We have been doing an ongoing week-long radio sponsorships on CAP Radio out of Sacramento that reaches out to Reno, Central Valley, and to the Bay Area. This program was created with a partnership in mind to make it affordable for our small businesses to be able to advertise in a larger market. And through this program, ACT has sponsored the doubling of airtime for these week-long radio spots for local businesses. This programming continues through February.
You say, local businesses, you're basically, so are the businesses buying airtime, and Amador Council Tourism is doubling that airtime?
Correct. And so that cost of the airtime, radio's pretty expensive. So what we've been able to do is negotiate with CAP Radio, and so a week's worth of radio spots is about 30 spots. We've doubled that, and it only costs the business just under $800 to be able to do that.
Okay, is it multiple businesses, or like, any particular businesses that are doing that, or?
Any businesses that wanted to participate have. So there are wineries that have participated. My Hotel Rest in Plymouth has participated, the Sutter Hotel, the Hanford House.
Okay, fair number of businesses.
Yeah, we did sponsorship for Jackson Christmas Delights, inviting people to come out to that as well.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah. The other items we are working on, we've created the Amador Burger Route. I know I was here earlier this year telling you we were gonna do that. It has been completed. We have a landing page on the Visit Amador website, where many local establishments are offering specials to come and experience their burgers. We've developed rack cards, a social media presence, email blast out to visitors, and we will ramp up countywide promotions, including punch cards and visitor and community engagement, and that will come in 2025. And as you mentioned, Supervisor Anetto, the outgoing supervisors won't get up and run out of their houses quickly to get to these meetings. And as I did that today, I left all of my file with the information to show you these things. So, I will come by the office and drop them off, so you can see them all. Other items, we will be participating in California Restaurant Month with Visit California. That is in January. And we will have an Amador Restaurant Week. I forgot to write down the dates, but I believe it's the third week of January that we will be having promotions with restaurants countywide. Also with Visit California, they have included images from Amador County in their recent photo shoots this fall and summer, in their Let's Play branding campaign. It's a $24 million paid media investment that inspires travel to California's ultimate playgrounds, which they've included Amador this year. Visit California has also recently featured Amador in these programs that they have, where we can submit events and things that we're doing in Amador to fit with their promotion. So we've had a few of those been submitted as well, that have been accepted for the submissions. Another item that we've been working on is the Daffodil Trail. This is something that we created to honor the Ryan family and their contribution to Amador County tourism over their many generations. And what we've done is, this is a multi-year project that will be ongoing, and the goal is to create a trail of daffodils that people can come and drive through Amador through an extended blooming season, all the way from the earliest in Ione up to the Kirkwood border. And so, just another thing that's community involvement.
You wouldn't think so, but it was amazing how many people went to Daffodil Hill. It was insane.
I've lived in Daffodil. I've lived in Daffodil for 28 years, yeah.
End up being a demise, it became too popular.
Yes, yes, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So this, this plan is to put the beauty of the daffodils throughout the community so it spreads out the visitors and gives them an extended time to come visit Amador, which we think is a good thing to do, and they can experience more things. So next fall, I hope you can come out and plant some daffodils with us as well.
You're always here speaking about business before us. Imagine that. That's okay. It's a good thing.
Next item that we have been working on, a couple weeks ago, we had a familiarization tour for Meeting Planners International. This group of folks spent a day and a half in Amador County and stayed the night. They toured local meeting sites, they went wine tasting, had dinner, took history walks, and the feedback from the attendees is still coming in. The folks have, ran into one of the gals the, the day after, and she was beaming about being able to see Amador in a new light and, and excited, and we did receive some feedback also from some of the attendees that came from Oregon that do meeting planning in the region, and they were very excited about the opportunities to do meetings here in Amador. The next item is Seasonal Spectacular. This is an annual trade show and educational conference that has over 500 attendees. These are meeting planners, and that fam tour that we did was an add-on to the seasonal spectacular and people coming into the area. The Amador booth was very busy the entire trade show. We engaged meeting planners from all over California and Oregon. And since the conference is holiday themed, we had photos with Santa, which was very popular. We gave over $2,000 in prizes were given away with our prize wheel. And we have a follow-up going out to all the attendees today that is a thank you for visiting our booth with specials, special offers by many of the participants in, in the booth to bring their meeting groups to Amador. So that, that's pretty exciting. We've been working hard to, to get that done. And our next item ongoing right now is the Amador Adventure Giveaway. This is our second year of doing this. We have almost $4,000 in prizes that are donated by local businesses. Yesterday, our president of the board, Kathleen Mahan, was on Fox 40 in the morning news promoting the Amador Adventure Giveaway. And the giveaway is where if a, if a member or a community member or anybody goes into a participating business, they scan a QR code, they enter their name and their zip code, and they're entered to win multiple prizes. So that is encouraging people to come here, do their Christmas shopping, and, and go visit the businesses. So you go into a business to participate, and we're having some great response right now. Other things that we are doing, we've been working with social media influencers. Maddie Edmonds, who is based out of Sacramento, is a huge social media influencer. She's been here for multiple visits this summer as well as this fall, and with her different reels and things that she's done on social media, there's been over 100,000 views. Her most popular one was her visit to the Black Chasm. We have her, I think, coming back in 2025 to do some rail exploring. Another most recent one, a couple, about a month ago, the Simco's Lens. It's a couple, they do soft travel. They have just been releasing their reels and their adventures here in Amador over the past two weeks, and as of now, of the five reels that they did, there's over 20,000 views. So that's, that's really good. They have a small following, and it's, it was, it was a great, great partnership. And all of these are partnerships where businesses are putting in and we're helping to fund that. The joint partnership with the Wine Heritage District in their marketing, for the past two weeks, there have been at the Sacramento International Airport and the baggage carousels, the kiosks, the digital displays above the baggage carousels have been inviting people to come to Amador. That will continue for approximately six to eight months, depending on our budgeting. And also with the partnership with the Wine Heritage District, we have started streaming TV ads on more than 20 streaming channels, and also advertisements, commercials on Fox 40 to come visit Amador. I'm almost done. We've been busy. Let me remind you, we're a volunteer board doing all of this. We co-hosted with the Wine Heritage District and the Chamber of Commerce a Responsible Beverage Service Certification. This is a state certification that's required every two years for anyone who serves alcohol or anybody who's in a nonprofit organization that serves alcohol. We had over 60 attendees. We have a couple other influencers that have recently been here or are coming. And then we also had a YouTube creator, a gentleman who was a photographer for CNN for many years, and he was here, he has a YouTube channel, and he teaches people how to take photographs, and so he spent a day touring some of our historic sites in Amador and creating content for his YouTube page. We have a AAA travel writer that's planning to come up and visit. We are working with her this week on her itinerary. We did print our first edition of our destination guide. It's a fold-out map with local town, all the local towns, and it was created with input from all the incorporated and unincorporated cities in Amador County. And that's, that's how we're closing out 2024. We have a lot more in store for 2025, and we just want to thank you for your continued support and let you know that we are always working to raise the tide and lift all the boats of Amador County. And like many people have done, I want to say thank you to Supervisor Forrester and Supervisor Axe. Your support of Amador tourism over the years has been wonderful. Supervisor Forrester, you've been with me since the beginning and always been a great supporter, so thank you. And thank you for all that you've done for our amazing community and during your time in office. We wish you all very happy holidays. Any questions I can answer for anybody?
Thank you for the comments, and I appreciate it. At our CSAC Conference, one of the policy committee meetings, there was discussion on California getting ready for the Olympics in Los Angeles, and it wasn't just Los Angeles getting ready, it's California getting ready because what they stated is all of these people are coming from around the world, and they want to see California. So how are you preparing for that and trying to get many, many of those people coming to the Olympics to Amador County?
We work in partnership with Visit California, and we are part of California's Ultimate Road Trip, and so we are continually upgrading and updating and working in conjunction with Visit California, who will coordinate many of the promotions for that.
That's good, but Visit California works with every county.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it might be good to look at what magazines or print material or websites are international and would reach the greatest amount of people.
It's a great suggestion. We'll put that on to our, our list of things to do. I appreciate that. And, and with the, with the inclusion in the Let's Play with Visit California, a lot of what they do is they, they have constituents that work in other countries, so they're already preparing people for when they come here, for what they can come and explore, and that's a, that's a huge partnership, especially with Gold Country Visitors Bureau as well.
Yeah, if you could get some individual ads, like in France, and say, "Come taste some really good wine, vive la Amador," something like that.
It's a big budget, that's a big budget item, probably would take our entire budget. But yeah, there's things we can do in partnership that, that would be feasible probably with Visit California, the Gold Country Visitors Association. Yeah, thank you. Anybody else?
Oh, thank you, Tracy.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Likewise, Merry Christmas. Any other members of the public like to comment on this issue? CNN, we're going to move on down to the one we're all waiting for. It's item 4E, General Service Administration, Approval of amended and restated lease agreement for the Health and Human Services Building.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
So yeah, this is related to the restated lease for the Health and Human Services Building. And we've been negotiating this, this restated lease for the last four or five months. And I'm just going to go over some of the main points here. So this, the amended lease has a 20-year term with two 10-year options. There's a rent reduction. Right now, the, under the current lease, the county's paying $3.62 a square foot, and the current, the restated amended lease would start at $2 a square foot. And so that'd be a savings of $1 million annually. And the rent increases are now going to be fixed instead of variable. So before, they were based on, on CPI escalations, which, you know, can, can vary from anywhere from 1% to, like we just recently saw, 9%, which is partly why the, the rent is currently so high. And so now the rent will be fixed at an annual increase of 2.5%. The county's going to have largely the same responsibilities, except that, that the county's now taking on greater responsibilities related to the HVAC and the asphalt and the fire sprinklers. And, and with that, the lessor is granting the, or has agreed to give the county $500,000 in tenant improvements that can be used over the 20-year lease term. And, and also from the rent payment, $100,000 annually will be put into a reserve account along with the, the tenant improvement allowance that can be used for any expense.
Is it, is it approximately $100,000?
It's approximately $100,000. I think it starts right around 98.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make that clarification.
And then, and then it increases annually 2.5%.
So it's over $100,000 in a year or two.
Exactly.
Yeah, because I didn't want to make it $100,000.
Yeah, yeah. Approximately $100,000, that's correct. And aside from that, just wanted to point out one little discrepancy in this, in this draft that, that we've, we've amended with the lessor. You'll see on 1.8 with the original tenant improvement, it starts out at 250,000, and it, and there's a discrepancy because right before that, it says 425,000. That should be 250,000 instead of the 425. And the reason for that $175,000 reduction is that the lessor has agreed under the original lease to replace the boiler at that cost. So that's, that's being handled outside of the...
And there's a 500,000...
Yes, so the $500,000 in tenant improvement is broken into two 10-year...
Yeah, I mean, the 675 is actually 500, the top of the page.
Exactly, exactly. So it's broken down 250 for the first 10 years, 250 for the second 10 years. And if you have any questions, I can answer those.
You've probably answered pretty much ones I had so far, so...
Okay.
You'd be reiterating things I already asked you.
Well, I'll be here if questions come up.
So we'll make that change, we'll strike the 675, make it 500?
Yes.
And then the 425 will become 250, 250,000?
Yes.
No, I would say I like this lease a lot better than the last one, last amended lease. I think you and some other staff worked pretty hard on this, and I think it, it's not a perfect lease, I'd probably like it a little cheaper, but considering all things, it's, I think it's probably a very workable, beneficial lease to the county.
Yeah, agreed. I mean, it, we're, we're still locked in with three more years of the original lease, and so this would get us out of that, having to pay three more years at the higher rent. So that's a savings of about $3 million right there.
I, excuse me, go ahead.
I'm good.
This boiler settlement we have, are they going to replace the boiler now? Is it imminent?
Yes, we're moving forward with that right now. Yeah, they're moving forward with that.
Okay.
Yeah, except boiler's like, what, $150,000 or something along that line, is it?
75.
175 is approximately how much money is being put into it right now.
Okay.
To replace the system.
Any members of the public like to comment on this issue? Man, all the holler and scream over the ears, I think there'd be somebody.
The grand jury will talk about it in the future, but...
Yeah.
It's going to be a future investigation.
We got the price downwards.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a lot, it's a lot, it's a lot better lease.
We can understand that.
Board members? Disappointed with those changes under 1.8, striking the 675, make it 500,000, and the 425,000 become 250.
Make that motion.
Okay, motion by Crew.
Second.
Second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It carries unanimous. Moving down to item 4F, General Service Administration Chinese Gambling Hall quote for drainage work.
Yes, so Chinese Gambling Hall, the background is that the, the structure's dilapidated, falling apart a bit. This was before the Board on August 27 of this year, and, and before the Board was whether to address these structural issues. It's a historical structure, so that cost could be well in excess of 200,000. So the Board at the time decided against any structural changes and asked, asked John to look into some drainage work above to, to prevent any further damage. So we got some quote for, for ditch and drainage work. We got a quote from Shenandoah Excavation. It was $21,194, and we're here today just to get some direction.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, it's an old structure. I wouldn't call it dilapidated, though, really. I mean, it's, it's in pretty good shape for what it is, but yeah, it's got some issues. Maybe, maybe, maybe how about it's struggling?
Struggling, okay, yeah.
Well-used.
You know, I meant to go out there over the weekend, I just didn't get there, so I ran out this morning, so I wanted to look. We haven't had quite as much rain as I would have liked, but I wanted to see how much water's coming in. It was bone dry, which maybe the ground sucked it up. But also, I looked again at the, at the dirt and rocks that slid down when we had the original failure, and looking at it, it didn't slide down as a muddy mess. It slid down as pretty solid dirt. And I'm not seeing, and I was looking around the floor there, looking again, because I looked before, I really didn't see, you know, where watered pools, you can kind of tell when water comes in and runs off a bank, it'll kind of leave a pool and sediment stuff. I really didn't see that. And, I mean, the bid that Shenandoah Excavation gave you, it wasn't a bad bid. The problem I have is looking at it, there's a little bit of dirt on top of rock. I mean, and you can take that dirt away, but I don't think it's really, it's not a lot of dirt. I don't think the dirt's really the reason it's failing. I think it's just you got a, you got a, a slip slope where that, where you have a rock sheer an angle, and that rock's weathering, and it's moving, and I kind of, I'm a little afraid to get up there and start digging around with a piece of construction equipment. You're, you're going to run into that rock, you're going to take that dirt away and run into that rock, and that, I think it might cause more problems.
Good.
I think probably the way you could probably do it is maybe do some shotcrete on the face and maybe put some like steel beams there. and maybe put some like steel beams there, and might be a little risky, but if you took a small rotor hammer, you might be able to drill some steel in there and put some concrete on on that wall and stabilize that way. But really, the problem is that the whole back wall is pretty weathered rock. And I don't think taking a little bit of dirt off the top is gonna change that. If anything, it might cause problems, because you're up there, unless you're doing it by hand, and then then you're not really doing a whole lot anyway. It's, it's a hard situation up there, what I see. And part of my problem is we need road money, and do I wanna, I don't think spending 20-some-thousand dollars up there doing a ditch, because it's rock, and you hit that rock, and it's gonna be hard. It's gonna really change much. That's kind of my thoughts on it.
Can't we just significantly tarp over the land around the area so it doesn't get inundated with water until appropriate funding can be, and then create a small ditch for runoff until a better fix can be afforded, hopefully by an outside group?
I think Mark's a little bit more knowledgeable about this building.
Good morning. Good morning. We can definitely tarp it, we can definitely dig a ditch, but by digging a ditch without putting any kind of erosion control, and that could be concrete swell or riprap, the the water's going to do more damage than anything else, because now it's gonna start, let's call it creating a Grand Canyon. The water's just gonna start eating everything away. So if you don't give it some kind of solid structure for the water to be on and get it out of there, then you're just causing more trouble.
Really? You got that rock underneath there, I don't think there'd be that much water coming off that hill. I mean, you're talking a small area. I mean, you might, it's debatable probably, but I.
The last couple, well, when I first, when I first started taking engineers, geotecs out there, and architects, they all agreed that it was the water that was causing the failure of the rock. And they all agreed that the dirt that's on the, let's call it the gable rock wall, the gable wall, rock wall, that dirt and the roots growing through the gable wall are going to cause damage over years as well. So they all agreed that getting that dirt away from that that gable wall, that rock wall, would be probably the best to limit the damage to that gable wall. And then, you know, set up some type of retaining wall to keep that dirt from going up against it, because that gable wall is just, you know, it's just a, it's just a wall, it's not a retaining wall. So you got all that dirt that's up against there, it's probably like, what, 10 by 3 of...
Yeah, 3 feet deep.
Yeah.
Yeah, roughly, yeah.
Of dirt that's up against that wall, and and as we get more rain and more stuff washes off the hill, it's just gonna pile up. So when we went out, when I went out with Shenandoah Excavation, I forgot the guy's name, but we both agreed that the best way to do it was in the scope of work.
Is do what?
Is the scope of work that you guys are looking at.
Who'd you go out with, Ron LeBancow?
Yes. I know his last name was LeBancow, I forgot his first name.
Ron, probably.
Okay.
Well, it's like, I'm not, I'm not carving a stone in it, I mean, wherever the Board wants to go, I kind of, I think you get up there and you start digging around that rock, and you look at that that face in there, it's on a, it's on a pretty good slope, and you're gonna be in there, you're gonna be scratching that rock.
You talking about the outside of the building?
Looking at the inside.
The inside?
Which, which that slope carries back up under the gable end, up up under the dirt we're gonna be working. And if you look at the pictures, there's that dirt that's either washed down, or maybe when they worked on it, they might have placed it against it, tried to get water to maybe sheet away from the building, I'm not sure how it came about.
That's what that gable wall's sitting on, is that rock.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, when you start digging there, you're gonna be hitting that rock and rattling that rock with an excavator, I imagine, probably mini excavator.
And you're absolutely right. One of the things that the engineers and the geotechnical guys all said was, any kind of equipment or drills should not be used at all around that that back wall.
Well, that's why I said you could maybe, maybe drill a small rotor hammer and put, you know.
They were absolutely against that, because that was one of the ideas, oh, maybe we can, you know, get some rebar in there and, you know, pin it up, and they're like new.
I think it'd be risky, but I mean, the thing is.
The only thing they said we can possibly do is just concrete the thing.
Like shotcreed it?
Yeah, yeah, no, more like concrete, something solid that's gonna hold the rock in place, or just start piling a whole bunch of rock on there, and it will never look the same.
My comment is, we gave direction to staff to get some experts and look at it and figure out the best fix, and now they've come back with the best fix, and we're second guessing the best fix. Why don't we go with the experts and do what they suggest?
Brian, I'm sure Ron LeBancow has dug enough around all these hills that he's got a pretty good idea of what's gonna happen.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to do it, I'm fine, I just.
Let's do it.
I think it's, it's, it's a cat poop mess. I'm not saying what he's gonna do there, it's just the situation is.
Well, yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not sure spending money on that is gonna do much good, really. But I mean, it's, I guess you could say the experts have looked at it, and maybe if we go that route, hey, so be it, I'm just, I'm looking for road money.
I know, but I think if Ron LeBancow felt like you did, he'd have said, I'm not even gonna bid this, I don't want to get, I don't think I can make it any better.
Okay, if you, if you want to go that route, I hope they, I hope it comes out very well. But time will tell. Any members of public like to comment on this?
And you never know, once you get into a historical structure, you just never know once you open up which way things are gonna go, but this is their best guess to fix it.
Absolutely, it is, you know, we're just assuming we can get that dirt out of there. And and when I, when I walked with Mr. LeBancow, we actually walked the outside and the inside, so he could see both sides and what was going on. So he's, you know, it was the best we could think of of what to do.
Yeah, I looked at this morning again, because I've been scratching my head over it, I've looked at it a few times, and it's just, it's a bad situation.
It's difficult, absolutely.
Any members of public like to comment on this item? CNN?
Move that we approve the contract with Shenandoah Excavating for the work on the Chinese Gambling Hall.
And transfer the funds out at contingency?
Yeah, and that's for a cost of how much, 21 or 27?
21.5.
21.
21,194.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay, a motion by Forster and a second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm just gonna be staying on it. So motion carries 401.
You're being awful difficult today.
I didn't vote no. It's just, I think it's, I think it's, it's a, it's gonna be a sticky baby, and that's all. But thank you. Moving on, item 4G, General Service Administration, Amber County Employer and Community Survey Report.
Good morning, Chairman Onetto, members of the Board.
Good morning.
So you have in your packet a copy of the report that I wanted to talk about.
Pretty extensive, wow.
Yeah, it was very interesting. So this was a survey, a couple of surveys, that I was, managed to connect with somebody from the Center of Excellence who works with the community colleges, and they have low, kind of a regional person who handles our area. And they did a labor market analysis for us, where we developed a survey for businesses in the area, and then another survey for the community residents. And the purpose was to try to find out what our employers in the region need in terms of workers and skills, and then find out what the community is interested in doing in terms of training and getting into certain careers. And trying to, trying to kind of help some of our stakeholders recognize that there might be some coverage there between the two, so that we can develop training programs for people that they're interested in and that we also need. So the report is very interesting, I put some of the information from the findings into the memo for you. But basically, you know, from the business side, we had 54 businesses respond, which isn't a huge amount, but what we did get was helpful. We had small businesses representing 77% of the respondents. We had, we were able to identify that the key industries from the survey recognized, please, that this is not the be-all, end-all, right? This doesn't capture everybody, but this is just the people who replied, or the businesses that replied. Hospitality, government, and retail trade being the key industries. And the additional participating industries I thought was important to mention here, construction, manufacturing, public utilities, agriculture, and healthcare. And then there's some, you know, hiring challenges for employers in our county that involve just some basic skills along with information technology skills. And then there seems to be, from the business perspective, a lack of work ethic amongst employer, employees, and they are, the employees are looking for flexibility in their schedules, and that might be something that the businesses may not be able to provide.
You know, something interesting, Karen, I do some work in the trades, and I talk to a lot of people, and some I've heard from a lot of people that move here, and there's a lot of good, there's a lot of good contractors, a lot of good business people here, but I have so many, it's kind of got my attention. People say, well, don't people want to work here? You know, they call people, they have them come out and do work or give them a bid, and they never show up. And so I don't know if the people are just, don't want to work that hard, or maybe they're too busy, but it seems like, I've heard it for 20 years. I've called five people, and one showed up, or none showed up, and and these are like, you know, people that are advertising or in business, and I'm not sure why.
My sense is that it is related to the fact that we don't have a lot of people working in the trades here, and the people who are working in the trades are very busy. I've had the same experience myself.
Well, they are now, they're busy now.
Right.
But when there's a downturn, then that's all gonna switch the other way.
Right, true, true. Okay, so moving on, there's also, you know, the issue with retaining employees for businesses, and the fact that, you know, obviously, people want the highest pay that they can achieve, and businesses can't always meet that or compete with businesses that are out of the area that provide jobs for people. And then on the second page of the memo, I kind of outlined some of the things that came out of the community survey that we did, where we had 383 respondents, which is fantastic. And, you know, about 90% of those people responding were interested in some kind of training or classes that they can take in Amador County, which is, you know, something that is somewhat lacking here. They, the areas of interest for study were not always, you know, matching up with what we have in terms of employment opportunities here. However, the skilled trades did kind of pop out to me in this, in this analysis. And then, you know, just some other additional information about what kinds of training they could attend, whether that's in person. I thought it was very interesting that 68% of the respondents preferred in-person training versus something that's online, but many people were also open to online training. And then there's some barriers to our residents attending classes, especially in person, you know, has to do with costs, childcare needs, and and those types of things. So that's kind of the summary of what is in a very lengthy report. And I wanted to find out from you if you have any questions about it, and then also get some guidance on sharing this report with our stakeholders, who were very much involved in helping to find the respondents that we needed for the surveys.
Karen, the Chamber of Commerce puts on several seminars for businesses, and I think some of these points should be, this report should be given to them, but it should be highlighted, some of the areas they might want to get some speakers to address. For instance, the climate change, the state is passing all kinds of legislation, and it says only 39% have a plan to deal with that legislation. And that's a big one for businesses in the future, because the state's not gonna stop, and they're putting more and more requirements on on businesses for compliance.
Yes, I agree.
So Karen, is this gonna be shared or involved with the Central Sierra Economic Development District, or?
The members of the Economic Development District have asked me multiple times if they can have a copy of this and the actual surveys, because they're interested in doing something similar.
Yeah, I think they would probably want to do something similar.
How long was the actual survey? How many pages?
It's in the report, and the actual questions are in there, and it was online, it was all online, so it wasn't like pages, I wouldn't say, but you can see, let me find the right page here. Page 38 is the community survey, and it actually shows like what it kind of looked like on the webpage. And I want to say we kept it to 10, or 10 or less questions, because we didn't want to encounter survey fatigue. So this one, the community survey, had six questions in total, and then the employer survey had 10.
Yeah, so it wasn't overbearing. I think you got a pretty good response, but I was thinking you might have got more if it wasn't so long, but it's only two pages.
Yeah, it wasn't a very long survey, and we did attempt to put it out in every way possible that we could. It was actually, because of it being a digital survey, might have affected who took the survey.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. And then, you know, when we sent it out to certain people, they were very enthusiastic, and might have sent it out to their colleagues within the same industry. And so that's something to keep in mind, too, the balance of industry might not be, might not be represented here.
How'd you, how'd you, how'd you pick where you sent it to? I don't recall ever seeing this myself.
So we sent it out to the Chamber of Commerce, the Amador Council of Tourism, that was just here, and put it out on the Economic Development Facebook page, we put it out on the website, the Amador County website. So we just tried to reach people.
Maybe I was too busy and just didn't fill it up, but I don't remember seeing it from the Chamber of Commerce, maybe they probably did email blast, maybe I just round filed it, but.
Yeah, hopefully.
Yeah. Sometimes you get, you get information overload.
Right. And that could be why we didn't also get responses from a lot of businesses, because we have a whole lot of businesses in this county, and we didn't get a huge amount of response from them.
Something a little bit dismaying is, the biggest black line by far on the graph was government, it's basically 33.9%.
Yes.
And the next nearest one is healthcare and social assistance. I don't know if that'd be government too or not, or related to government to a certain degree, was 11.4%. Retail, retail trade was 11.2, construction 6.2, manufacturing 5.9. Yeah, it's kind of one of, one of Achilles' heels of the county, is there's not much, there's not much in the way manufacturing-type jobs, like industry hits. And the thing is, I mean, it's, I know we looked at over the years, how can you get more of it, and it's something really hard to get, especially when you're kind of in a remote area, you don't have access to, basically don't have access to rail, major airport, major highways. It's kind of a blessing and a curse, it makes a real nice place to live, but a hard place to work, if you can find it.
Sure. Well, one of the reasons why we wanted to do something like this with the survey is because we don't have a community college in our county, and a lot of the workforce development stakeholders that are out there are told, you know, to partner with a community college. And we don't, because we don't have one here, and Amador College Connect has been able to develop somewhat of a relationship with Columbia College, but they really wanted to see a survey like this done, so that they knew if they offered classes here, it would be a good return on their investment. And so it's helpful to to kind of look at this information, especially when we're talking about workforce development, and not provide training that we think, because of anecdotal scenarios, that we know what people want and we know what is needed. We really needed to have some data behind it. We really needed to have some data behind it, and so this will allow them to make data-driven decisions.
Karen, you're looking for the group to summarize, who filled out the survey to see the results?
Correct. I think, you know, the.
Could you do something like, I was just thinking, like send them a, save the date, we're going to have it on the website for ten days, and we'd like, there's a response page, we'd like to, we're trying to summarize this, we don't want to go on forever. So somewhere in the first two weeks of January, say, it's going to be up, and we'd like to, your, some way a deadline of some kind, to kind of condense the response.
Well, we don't really need to get a response at this point from anybody, it's just a matter of sharing the information. And so, you know, the businesses, you know, that we reached out to are aware that we have the survey, the community residents who responded and saw the notifications responded to the survey, they know that this was out there, and so I think it would be appropriate, which is my opinion, to provide them with the ability to read the report themselves.
Yeah, maybe. Like I was saying, Brian, if I was still in business, I would find that report very interesting, because it, we all have the same problems, it's just a varying degree.
Yes, sir.
Of the same problem.
Mm-hmm.
I'm kind of surprised, you must not have had too many businesses that use diesel-powered equipment in your survey, because every business I know has any type of diesel-powered equipment, they're just getting, it's, it's killing them, all what the state's requiring. And over the weekend, I watched a thing, like the, like tow industry of California, or this nation, I can't remember which it was, and they're talking about, hey, if, if things keep going like they're going, and it's, and it's not a maybe, it's a probably, you're going to break down the freeway and call for a tow truck, and they're going to say, sorry, we can't help you. So maybe the state will blink and give them some exemptions or do something, but there's, the man was saying, there is no electric tow trucks that meet state requirements. And the state's pushing, everything has to go all electric, and he's saying, currently, they don't exist. So anyway, this is a lot of, a lot of good information in here, I mean, it's pretty interesting.
So, so who performed the study?
The Center of Excellence did the.
At Chico?
With the survey, and then they, they, yes, they partnered with Chico State.
And they paid, and that was paid for out of a grant?
Nope, they, it was, did it, it was completely free.
Oh, okay.
No charge to the county at all.
Good.
I knew you would like that.
Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
I would move the, to approve the request to share the document with stakeholders and community members.
Motion by Forster, second by Creel, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Yep. Pardon me, but I'm not sure if I asked for public comment, so just in case, if any members publicly could comment on this item. Okay, see you then. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you so much.
Moving on, item four H.
Do you want to take a break and go to the.
Yeah. Um, yeah, probably should. Take a, what, maybe ten-minute break?
Yeah.
Come back at twenty-till.
Order. We have a public hearing scheduled for 10:30. This item, the first one is item 5A, Planning Department request for a variance, V dash two four nine dash one Seaver from a 25-foot front yard setback requirement to allow construction with two-car attached garage and covered unconditioned walkway addition for a total of 20 feet in existing 25-foot setback. This APN 026 dash 141 dash 005.
Good morning.
Good morning, Krista.
Krista from the Planning Department. I guess I'll introduce. So the applicant for this project is John, or applicants are John and Jenny Seaver, and we also have Jennifer Brum with Ecosense Designs as their representative. This is up in Supervisory Listric three at 34214 Fremont Road in Kirkwood. And this is within the planned development, single-family residential zoning within the Kirkwood specific plan area. It is a quarter of an acre. And so this would be a variance to allow them to construct that garage closer to the road to allow for easier access to the existing residence that is there.
It seems a pretty popular thing.
Yeah.
Up there right now.
Yeah, they're fairly common just for the sake of residents being able to access when there's snow and everything. Let's see, as far as like otherwise, there's, it's a fairly standard project just for the residents to be able to access their home. This project was reviewed by the Tri-County Technical Advisory Committee in October, Amador County Tech also in October, and then neither of those committees had any objections to the project. And then the Planning Commission also reviewed the application, I believe it was last, yeah, it would have been in November. So they also had no issues with the approval of the project, and they also approved the proposed exemption under CEQA for 15305, Class 5, for minor setback variance.
It looks like you had no letters of opposition and stuff, so.
No, yeah, it's fairly standard. Everyone was on board as far as you're aware.
Okay.
The proposed ADU, does that have to go through the Kirkwood Metals Association?
So that originally was proposed, and it was included in the application, but it's not actually located within that setback area. So there's no additional discretionary action that would be required. It would just require standard building permits over the counter with our building office. Yeah, so it's just the walkway and the garage that would be located within that setback area.
You know, I think, any more questions on the board? This time we open the public hearing. Any members of the public like to comment? Seeing none.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Axe, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimous. Now looking for action.
Take it away Supervisor Forrester.
Yeah, move to approve the resolution approving a variance and the findings in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion by Forrester, second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
You know, we're gonna, we're gonna miss your competence in doing these resolu-, you know, these motions for these public hearings.
Yeah, I got that pretty good. Anybody, any opposed? Carries unanimous. Moving on down, item 5B. This is General Services Administration, the Capitol Facility Annual Disclosure Review with annual CCI adjustments.
Hi, I'm back.
Hello.
So I provided you with all of the documentation that we do. This is our annual required disclosure review about the Capitol facility's fees that are collected for building in the county. I, so you got, you received the report. There is a request to increase those fees by the CCI, that's the City Construction Cost Index, CCI. And the increase for this year would be 1% on the schedule of fees.
I think that's pretty reasonable considering.
Did you all have any questions?
Well, I had a couple of questions I posed to, to Glenn, and then Greg answered too. Glenn maybe wanted, want to summarize those, but basically the question was, like on this building, if we can only use the money collected for growth that's occurring, is it appropriate to still keep collecting? Because I don't see us doing many improvements to this building for a long time to accommodate new, new growth.
Yeah, so Greg will have some comments on this, too. The Code section does not allow these fees to be used for existing deficiencies, but it can be used for refurbishing to, in order to maintain the existing level of service. So there's a, not a lot of case law on this, so there's some ambiguity as to where that line is. And I'm thinking specifically of the boiler for this building. So that's, that's a possibility. We just need to explore that some more. But another use for the fee, as I understand right now, is that it's being used to pay for debt service for the building. And also, you, you want to set aside this fund and let it build up because at some point you're going to need to replace this building or do some major work on it, which clearly would, I think, as long as it's not an existing deficiency, would qualify as, as something you could use the funds for, for refurbishment or to a replacement of the building. At some point, you're going to need to spend money for a replacement for the building.
I, I think we want to research that pretty carefully because what we don't want to do is spend money on like a new boiler and then be challenged on it and have to repay that.
Yeah.
Which, I guess Chuck and I were talking about this, maybe we can buy a bigger boiler so that we could accommodate.
Serve the new residents.
In the future, but, but then could you pay for it 100% with that or only, only a share?
It really is going to depend. I think, in my view, so the language says you can use it for refurbishments, but I think the overarching intent of impact fees is to deal with growth, new development pressures. And so to the extent you can tie new development pressures to the need to get a new or to refurbish the boiler, I, I think it would be appropriate. So it may be a portion of the boiler cost that would be towards growth. I mean, in terms of the, the other question about why we're collecting these fees, you know, it doesn't have to just be the admin building and the jail, which is historically what has been included. It could be for the general services building that is now, you know, reaching its sort of limits of, of capacity. It could be for a library. It could be for all sorts of public community infrastructure. And, and I think it's in the report that, that there was about $2 million worth of the cost of this building that could be allocated towards growth, and that the county's only collected a little less than half of that. So continuing with that fee, this fee continues to repay the county that money that.
So that kind of solves that then here.
That, that's why it would continue. And then, like, like Glenn said, at some point in the very distant future, I, I would assume the county will grow, and there will be growth pressures either for this building or for the jail, or if, if the board ever at any time wants to consider adding other things to the, the fee component.
I, I think it's appropriate, though, for staff to do some work and find background information, whether it be from other counties or case law, so that we, we have an answer when somebody comes up and says, why, why am I having to pay this? You don't need it. You're not doing any work there. So we have some substantial information to, to address those concerns so we don't get litigated.
So, yeah, it's really, that's the, the nexus. You know, when we, when the board approves a nexus report that justifies the basis of the fee, it, it looks at what our future needs are, what the costs of those future needs are, how much growth you have versus, you know, so, so that nexus is what sort of sets the fee and justifies the fee. We did talk with the, the consultant that puts together the nexus for us, and there's some, there's a case out of El Dorado County that went all the way to the Supreme Court that sort of created some uncertainty about how things will go in the future. So we're kind of waiting for that to sort of flesh out maybe a little before we redo the nexus and then look at, you know, where you sort of revalidate the fee and the amount.
Thank you.
I, I did want to point out one thing on the, on where we are right now. The CAC building actually just has $78,000 in that, in that fund right now, as of today, $78,521. And the jail has, is short 2 million. That's, Karen could speak to the accounting on that. And, and then for administration, there's $21,000 in there. So that point is that money is getting used.
Yeah, we're using it for debt service on this building. So, which ends actually next year. So we will, this building will be debt, debt-free.
That'll be a wonderful thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, then we need a new boiler.
So, so that, that money we were paying on it, would that, that's coming out of this fund, or can those ones then go for something else?
Well, that, those funds can go for something else. We were paying $700,000 a year in this building.
Yeah, okay.
And cumulatively, it was $2 million of this building was identified as growth-related. So, you know, we've been paying since 2004 on this building, so we paid a lot more than that.
Okay. Well, any more questions? This time, open the public hearing. Any members of the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none. Board. Looking for motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous. And now looking for action.
So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to accept the 2023-24 annual disclosure and review increasing the CFF by 1%, CCI effective January 1st, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion by Axe and a second by Forrester. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimous. So now moving back to regular agenda.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, Karen. Hold on here a second. Here it is. Misplaced it. We have item 4H. This is Code Enforcement, discussion of possible action relative to permission to abate the following property of junk and trash. This is 25252 Merlin Drive, Pioneer, California, APN number 023, day 610, day 051. Sainer.
You want to wait for our code enforcement?
Looks like she's not here yet.
Yeah, she, um.
She's got, she's gonna run upstairs and grab some items. I told her I thought probably 20, maybe 30 minutes, so.
Okay, she, yeah.
She's working on it.
You could skip ahead to the last two items.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you, there's minutes and a committee.
Yeah, okay, we could do that. Item 4L, November 26, 2024, minutes. Any changes?
Move to approve, November 26, board supervisor meeting minutes, as is.
Okay, we have a motion by Axe, second by Drew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous. And 4M, 2024 Committee Assignments.
Didn't we decide we were going to move that to first meeting and?
Thank you. That is on the January 14th meeting. I think it somehow ended up on the.
Yeah.
Agenda before it was finalized. So we removed it and placed it for the 14th.
Okay, well, I was wondering, because I never got any paper back up, but is there any, anything?
On my, on my.
Well, Pat, we got nothing else to talk about. You want to talk about a committee assignments or wait till January?
Well, I got it pretty well, pretty well fleshed out. There's a few that, are we going to keep the, there's some of those committees. I don't even know if they still exist. Like, I know ARSA is on its last legs, but I guess it's still.
It's in the process of dissolution.
Yeah. So, so my point, would we even bother to have a?
Yeah, I think you'll still need a person.
Okay, that was the kind of things I wanted.
Till the dissolution occurs. I mean, with the understanding that it may not last the year.
Okay.
Because it'll be the city center creek that'll be in charge of everything.
I think that was the only one I was, I knew there was trouble there, so I wasn't sure.
I wouldn't say it's trouble. It's just gonna be there responsibility entirely.
Yeah, I know this year when I, when I was doing committee assignments, I tried to, I tried to purge any of the ones that were not pertinent.
Yeah, like the Major Q.
Yeah, whatever it are.
We ought to probably keep that going because it's going to have to go back on the ballot a couple of years.
No, true.
Just have to go at it a different way because it was a flop the way we did it.
Yeah, I think, well, I think people are struggling and maybe, maybe just people didn't understand or, I don't know, but as far as, I don't have a, don't have a choice, really.
I get a couple of those straightened out, I'll send you all of them. Projected. See if you can look at it before the meeting.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Turn it into Jen, Jennifer. No. You kicked me off. You forget. For the same reason.
Mr. Chairman, we do have an update. Code enforcement should be arriving within five minutes.
Okay. This is 25252 Merlin Drive, Pioneer, California, APN 023, day 610, day 051. Sainer.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
So I'm here to seek approval to abate the above property of the junk and trash. Code enforcement, myself, has made numerous attempts via email, phone, and mail to contact owner with no response. The vehicle and RVs will be removed under the county code, Chapter 1032, abandoned and operable vehicles. The costs will be covered under the AVA authority for those. The cost to remove the junk and trash will be $451.70 for the rental of a cat loader from Sierra Yard and Supply and Equipment for the four hours. Labor will be performed by code enforcement. Republic Services will be providing the dumpsters needed, and the county will seek to recoup all costs associated to the case once the abatement is approved. A warrant will be obtained to abate the property of the violations.
Where's the initial cost, funding coming from to, to do this abatement?
That's where we'll be finding out because there is no abatement fund that I know of that code enforcement has.
There's not. So what you would do is if you approve this, we will transfer those funds from contingencies to, to the department.
Then a lien would be placed on the property and hopefully someday we'll recover that.
So, so what I'll end up doing is after the abatement's done, I'll send a 30-day payment notice. If they fail to pay the notice, then I'll come back before you guys to, yes, place a lien on the property for the, for the cost recovery.
Can't we just make, include that in the motion today so you wouldn't have to come back?
I, I still have to give them the right to be able to pay, but-
Yeah, I, I think we have to go through the steps, send them-
They approve the entire course of action, that if, if no payment is received, then go forward.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's not on the agenda. I mean, it's not agendized for you to approve the whole package and I'd have to, I'd want to look at it.
I, I think that'd be good to look at in the future so it saves one step if we can do it that way legally.
Yeah, I could, I could agree with that if, if we can.
Okay.
Is there any members of the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, looking for a motion?
I would move that the board have permission to abate the property of junk and trash.
Second.
With the, um, costs included for the, for the, the equipment needed.
Second.
A motion by Forster, second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimous. Moving down to item 4I. This is code enforcement. Location is, uh, this is discussion of possible action relative to abate the following property of junk and trash. It's 19074 Pine Drive East, Pioneer, California, APN 023, 380, 017. Campbell.
Okay. Also, I'm seeking to, for approval to abate the above property of the junk, trash, trailers, and structure. Code enforcement has made several attempts via email and mail to contact property owners, Stephen and Yolanda Campbell. The camper trails will be removed under the county code, Chapter 1032, abandoned and operable vehicles. Costs will be covered under the AVA authority. The cost to remove the junk, trash, and structure will be the $451.451 for the rental of the cat loader from the Sierra Yard, Supply, and Equipment for four hours. Labor will be performed by code enforcement. Republic Services will be providing the dumpsters needed, and the county will seek to recoup all costs associated to the case once the abatement is approved. A warrant will be obtained to abate the properties of the violation. Any questions on that one?
I had a question on this one. You know, there's no pictures here. So, when you say structures, what is the structure?
So what's left of the structure is, so if you can imagine kind of a slight slope of a hill, so you, there's a little section of, we'll call the porch, which I'm not going to touch. That's flat on the ground. There's, there's no safety issues with it. It's the one that's over by the slope is, it's the, I'll call it the deck that goes underneath. So there's a little bit of the deck and the sidewall. So we're going to remove the upper deck portion so that way there's no reason for anybody to fall through and then-
Does house burnt?
Yeah, because the house burnt down.
Okay.
So there's like a small, small portion of it.
I guess the reason I brought it up is, um, I know we, we talked about it before and the, and the board didn't agree with my position. And I was, I was, sometimes I'm wondering about if people have a trailer house. I, I'd like to see a way where people could have a trailer house and get a permit as long as they keep it clean, hooked up the water sewer. That's why I was asking. I thought maybe it's a situation like that. It's not like this is just, has issues.
Yeah. It's just to get rid of the safety issues and avoid anybody from actually living underneath there as well.
Okay.
To the-
Yes, everything, the entire case cost.
Okay.
Yeah, everything will be charged.
Is someone trying to live under there?
Uh, I haven't seen anybody there. It, it was someone living in one of the RVs that I took originally-
Okay.
-at the beginning.
Okay. Any members of the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, board?
I have a question for Michelle. Um, I don't know if it was this one, it might have been this one, where the owner or owner representative refused you access at one point. If, if that happens, let's say when you go in to abate the property and they refuse access, at that point can law enforcement get involved and allow you to go in?
Yes, because there, there is a civil code for warrants that if he prohibits me from doing so, then yes, I can issue him a warrant. Or, I'm sorry, a misdemeanor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to allow code enforcement the permission to abate the property at 19074 Pine Drive East, Pioneer of Junk and Trash.
A motion by Axe. Looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Drew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimous. Moving down to item 4J. This is code enforcement. Abatement of the following property for junk and trash. This is 17980 Timber Court, Pioneer, California. This is Bon Tempo.
Yes, I wish to seek permission to abate the above property of the junk. Code enforcement has made several attempts to contact property owner Kathleen D. Bon Tempo. On October 10th, 2024, contact was made. An additional time was granted to Ms. Bon Tempo to comply. Today, the property is still in violation. So the cost to remove the junk will be $451, $451.70 for the rental of the cat loader from Sierra Yard, Supply, and Equipment for the four hours. Labor will be performed by code enforcement. Republic Services will be providing the dumpsters needed, and the county will seek to recoup all costs associated to the case. Once the abatement is approved, a warrant will be obtained to abate the property of the violation.
When do you think you're going to get to some of these?
So, the more higher elevation ones, I want to try, because these are going to be the lot more, I won't get to them. This one's right off of a street.
Right.
It's going to be a lot easier. These I won't, so I'm trying to get to these first. I do have the warrants ready for them, so I will get those over. And then I will get to this one is, again, as soon as weather's permitting with all of these, I'll move forward as fast as I can.
This is one of the ones that-
Yeah, I don't know-
The definite neighbor that was-
Mr. McAllister is here or not, yeah, I don't-
Okay, any members of the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, board?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Forster. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous. Moving down to item 4K. This is also another code enforcement. This is approval request to obtain dumpster, or two dumpsters to be provided to property and to bring the subject property into compliance. The location is 20592 Dunshie Road, Pine Grove, California. This is APN 036, day 080, day 023, day 501. Costelli.
Yes, so I'm requesting a dumpster or two dumpsters, if needed, be provided to Mr. Costelli so he can finish bringing his property into compliance with the trash and junk violations. Mr. Costelli has agreed to do the work himself and will pay the county back. The cost for a dumpster is averaged around $550, depending again on the tonnage if it goes over. Republic will provide the dumpsters for the county. Mr. Costelli will be given a week with the dumpster, and code enforcement will do a progress inspection in the middle of the week to make sure he is showing progress and to see if a second dumpster will be needed. If he fails to comply, he knows the county will abate the property. And if the board approves, a document will be created with Mr. Costelli to discuss when it will be done, payment, and, and also take care of the vehicle violations as well. So, as of now, he's willing to do it himself and take care of it. But he is aware of, if he fails to do so, then I will come back and the county will have to abate the property. But he will still be charged for the dumpsters anytime that happens prior to that, too.
I guess the one question I'd have, how would the county know we're going to get paid back? Because basically we're fronting money for dumpsters.
If he doesn't, then we'll do a special assessment lien which goes on the taxes. So.
Does that sound okay, Greg?
Yeah, you're, you're, this is sort of a partial abatement. You're just providing the dumpsters and he's, it's, it's a-
You have to sign some type of documentation, basically. Okay. Are there any members of the public that'd like to comment on this item? Seeing none, board?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Brown is second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. I did want to say Forster and Axe, thank you for your service and good luck in whatever endeavor you have in the future.
Thanks. It was good working with you.
My number one goal is to not have code enforcement come to my house.
That's a lot of them goals.
Yeah. That's an important goal.
Ask for a variant.
We adjourn until Tuesday, January 14th, 2025. Holy cow.
25.
24, go. At 9 o'clock AM. Thank you.